Well, welcome. Interesting year this year when it comes down to school committee. We have two openings and two people running. You may ask, why are we doing this show? Because normally, we do it so that you can get to learn about the candidates and select the one that you like the best to represent you. That's why we're doing this show. I've always said, the Selectmen, the FinCom, all the department heads, they all play a role in town, but none bigger than the school committee. I remember when we got to high school, I was lucky to catch an hour or two a day for my offspring. School committee sets policy that takes six to eight hours a day. So it is critical that you get to learn who is setting that policy. And tonight, we're going to meet one of the people. So why don't we start with an introduction?
Thank you. I'm Jen Parsons, and I'm running for school committee.
Jen, traditionally, every show I've ever started, you win it before. I start with, "I'm from Milford. Why should I vote for you?" And again, we'll start it tonight.
It's a good question. And I can't remember what my answer was three years ago, but I can tell you what my answer would be tonight. Number one, education is my passion. It's what I do every day, day in, day out. I do it for a living. I do it for a hobby. Education means the world to me, and being able to contribute to the education in the Milford Public Schools is very rewarding for me. So number one, it's my passion for education. Number two, I feel like over the past three years, I've been able to be part of a number of initiatives and some of the momentum that we have in the Milford Public Schools right now. And I'd like to continue with that work and continue with some of the things that we've started and be part of some of the good work that I see moving forward. Hmm, third? Have to go through...
Not two are okay.
Oh, great. Okay, I like those two.
Three years ago, you came on the show. You ran for school committee for the first time.
Yeah.
I've talked to a lot of school committee members over the years, and they say, well, the first three years, first term was learning, because it takes that long to really understand. Now, you had, you cheated, because you come from an education background every day. How would you describe your first three years?
They've been an incredible learning experience. So I think even for you...
Even for me.
When you're working in a school and you're working with X number of students and teachers, that's one aspect of education. I can tell you that it's a big leap, moving from one side of that school committee table to the other side, from sitting in front of it to sitting behind it. And there are many things that I didn't know as much about as I know now. Creating a budget, negotiating a contract, working on a building project. And there are many, many things beyond that. But absolutely, you're learning all the time. And on top of that, you're learning how to deal with six other people, in the case of the Milford School Committee. You're learning how to work with constituents who may have questions and come to you for advice. And you're learning how to help move things forward with school administration as well.
Well, it's funny, because I've always said, my life is a number of eight. To get anything passed on FinCom, we need eight. Your life is a number of four, because you have to have four people agreeing.
Right.
How hard is it to get that kind of consensus?
I would say, in my career, I've been an observer of many school committee meetings. I've seen lots of different school committee members and how they function over the years. And I would say that the school committee I'm sitting on right now is probably one of the more functional. I think that we are a group that listens to each other. I think we try to use data and information to make our decisions. And I think people really vote with their conscience and with what they think is right for kids. So I would say, right now, we have a group of people who really are doing what's right for kids. So I have to say, I've been very fortunate, because I haven't found it terribly difficult to find four, and sometimes more than four.
Well, you know, it's funny, because over the years, we've seen school committees that were always in the newspaper over different opinions. I haven't seen a lot of open, I'll call it dissension. It seems like that this group of seven seems to work pretty well together.
I think we do, and I think each of us brings something different to the table. And because of that, I think we each respect what the others bring, and we listen. I've found that each other person has some kind of expertise that I may not have, and maybe I have some that they don't. And because of that, I think we form a pretty good group. We've been able to get things done and accomplish, not always as quickly as I might like, or as any of them may like. But it's been a good, it's been a very good experience.
How does it affect you, how does it affect your day job, now that you get to see the other side of the table?
Well, there will be times where my superintendent will say, you know, Jen, you understand this. You're on a school committee. You get this. And I'll say, yep, I do. But I think I have a much better sense of the big picture. And I understand when a budget is created, what that means. And when the town says, you have X amount of dollars to spend, I understand what that means. And that's not just a Milford thing, that's everything. You have to be that kind of person who looks at the big picture. You're always looking for, how can we forward things for children? But you always have to look at their taxpayers, their financial constraints, how do we get the most out of what we have to work with?
Milford gets beat up a lot over our MCAS scores, our PARC scores. When somebody comes in and says to you, "Why are our scores so bad?", how do you respond?
You know, it's a really complicated question. And I think anyone in any town can get nailed on any day of the week with test scores. I think we have a very, we have an interesting population in Milford, and we have a lot of challenges that some other towns, you know, some of our neighboring towns, in fact, may not have. So when you take children who are not natives to English, and you take children with significant special needs, and you throw a test of incredible rigor at them, they're not all going to pass that test. They will show growth in other ways. And yes, it's our job, because that's the measure that we have, and it's a very public measure. And it's our job to make sure the students have the core curriculum that they need in general to perform well on those assessments, because technically, they're supposed to be assessing the curriculum. But I think any educator you talk to would look at the level of rigor on those tests and say, not every child is going to meet the benchmark. The one nice thing that we've had with the MCAS is we're able to measure student growth. And you're able to see from year to year, how is an individual student grown and developed? And sometimes, they may not be developing at the benchmark you'd hope, but they've shown growth. It's, and it's one measure. Some kids don't test well. When I look at Milford, I look at all these kids who have just signed onto great colleges. I look at the success of our high school students. I look at the college and career readiness that has been coming in, and those are also measures of success.
You know, I remember, and I always bring this up, because, I don't know if you knew Tommy Davern? Quiet and shy Tommy. I mean, I've never seen somebody take so much pride in his school. So when my oldest, when ungrateful offspring, number one, went to Middle School East, I sat on my first parent-teacher, what do they call it, school council meeting? I looked at Tommy and I said, "Why do your MCAS scores suck?". And I got the exact reaction I thought I'd get from him. He says, "You're ignorant." I said, "Oh, then enlighten me." And it was amazing, because he showed me the data, and he said, "Al, all kidding aside, we have a bimodal distribution here. Our top kids do as well as any town around." He said, "I'll put our top kids up to, up against any school's top kids. But we have kids, as you mentioned, who, English is not a native language, who are coming in with no education. And although they do the best they can, they're not going to test at the same level."
Right.
So when you average the two...
Right.
Milford comes out lower than lots of towns. So that made me feel a lot better.
Well, it's also difficult, because the state, they're really, there's no forgiveness. So if you've been in this country for one year, you're taking the high stakes test.
Right.
It is what it is. And that's, that's a challenge.
And you know, at the end of, I used to kid Bob Tremblay, and now Kevin, where I say, you know, "We can have our opinions of the Milford school system. Doesn't matter to me. The only opinions that matter are the colleges." I said, "You know, your job is to educate my children, all 4,200 of our children. And then the judges are the schools." And when my oldest daughter applied and got into every school she wanted, that tells me you're not doing too bad of a job.
No, when I think about that all the time, especially this time of year, when you start hearing the kids telling you where they're being accepted. And there's no shortage of kids who are being accepted at great schools.
Yeah, it's not all okey-dokey community college here.
Yeah.
There's Ivy League schools. I mean, my youngest applied to one school, Holy Cross. That's where she wanted, and she got in. I guess I couldn't ask for better.
No, and I think, you know, another great thing at our high school right now is they're offering a lot of college-level courses for our high school students. So our kids are really getting great preparation for the level of expectation in a college course. So they're starting young.
And I mean, again, getting in is step one. Then the question is, how many stick? Did you really prepare these kids?
Right.
You know, and again, I laugh, because I remember, I think it was Lexi's junior year, she came home, and I said, "Oh, we've been taking the semester off?" And she looks, she said, "What do you mean?" I said, "A B+. You know, the last three years at Clark, she got 1B+. Everything else was A or A+. So we busted her backside, but you sit there and say, you know, "Seems like the school did a pretty good job preparing her."
I would say.
If she can pull that off, you know? Of course, she got revenge, because she pulled my transcript and said, "I don't see four O's across the board for you." So you can't get, somebody taught her to do diligence.
Right.
There's a feeling from many parents that the immigrant population hurts the educational level of the residents of Milford. What's your take?
Well, I certainly wouldn't put it that way. It impacts the way that we educate students, and it impacts the type of instructional support that we need. But this is a town of immigrants, and it's a town that's always been made of immigrants. And this is a country of immigrants. And I would say, my personal opinion is, at this time, more than ever, we need to be respectful of people of all backgrounds, of all ethnicities. And if they are in our schools, it's our job to educate them. You could say the same thing about students with special needs.
True.
You could say the same thing about students who are gifted and need a different kind of educational program.
Well, those are both special needs. We've had that discussion for years, to say, there's a group of special needs kids who needs help, who need help getting to the average. And then there's the top 10% or so who need help getting a Nobel Prize.
Right.
But they're all special needs.
Well, every kid is special. But I mean, and I'm saying that tongue-in-cheek, because that is kind of how a society and parents today, probably myself included, look at things. But our job is to make sure the kids have what they need, and our job is to make sure they're fully educated, that if they're not speaking the language, that they're graduating from our EL program by the time that they're done in our schools. And I think it's our, our students' need to understand that we're not just all a bunch of American white people in the country of America. And they need to be understanding of and respectful of people from all different backgrounds. That's what makes this country such a great place.
Well, I mean, I've always looked at America as the biggest thieves of the world. We steal the most talented people from all over the world.
Yeah.
You know, you think about it, we have them, especially in New England. We're the biggest thieves in the country, because so many kids come here to top schools. And then, I think the last date I saw is more than 25% stay. So you got your, not your poorest, not your least educated, coming to schools like Harvard, MIT, and all the others.
Right.
It's a good thing to have them stay and create jobs and create new companies.
And they value education, and so they're contributing.
You know, and it's amazing, because you know, you think about Milford, the Guatemalans are the new Ecuadorians. Who are the new Brazilians? Who are the new Portuguese? Who are the new Italians? Who are the new Irish? I mean, at the end of the day, what's made Milford so strong is, again, stealing a little bit of culture from each of those groups.
Right. I agree with that.
Now, we always run into this time of year, too much money and not enough to spend it on, right?
That's not exactly what I heard at the last FinCom meeting.
I was going to say. What do you think, from a financial point of view, the biggest challenge facing the school system in Milford is?
Well, I think there are a couple of things. I think certainly one of the challenges, probably even more than ELL or special education, is the impact of social and emotional mental health issues with our students. And that's financial, because it comes down to, what kind of supports do we have to make sure the kids are ready to learn and available for learning in the classroom? And if they're not, how can we help them to get to that place where they're ready to learn? And that takes a different type of staffing and a different type of support model than just sitting in a classroom and learning English, or algebra, or whatever that may be.
When we were kids, the most scary thing in the world is for a teacher to say, "I'll call your mother a father." Because I know, beat me, do anything you want, just please, don't call home.
Yep.
Because, you know, and again, it's just my opinion, I have no data, but back then, my parents were clearly under the opinion that, "Your job is to educate my children. My job is to raise them and bring them up."
Right.
You've been an educator for a while. Have you seen a change where the school has to take on more of the responsibility of raising the kids?
Well, you know, I think, I think there's definitely a change in the family dynamic. And so I think there are a lot of children coming from challenging home situations, where they may not be with both parents, or they may be going back and forth, or parents may be working multiple jobs, so there's not the same kind of oversight at home as the parent may want to be able to provide. But then there's this other whole wave of mental health challenges that, in many cases, parents don't even understand. And they look to us to help. And sometimes, we don't understand. And so that involves looking for experts, looking for special programming, looking for the right kind of supports. And that always comes with some kind of a price tag.
I would think a very expensive price tag.
If you're looking at different kind of programming, and additional psychologists, or adjustment counselors, things like that, it does. So I'd say for sure, that's a pervasive issue that definitely could have a price tag. I would say, the age of our high school is going to be something that we'll be talking about over the course of, I don't know, probably the next seven to 10 years. It's a 50-year-old building, or it's somewhere in that area.
1974.
So we'll do that math.
We can do that math.
So it's just a little bit younger than I am. So you know, that's something that we want to make sure. We have some space issues up there. We need to make sure that we're offering our students what they need to be competitive, and to make sure they have access to whatever the latest and greatest in educational research says.
Yeah, I don't think there's a doubt with a lot of people. I know it's not universal yet, but you know, a lot of people saying, "There's a school coming." You know, 12 years ago, when we started building up Stabilization, and everybody said, "Why are you building it so high?" We said, "There's a school coming." And Woodland came, and I'm pretty proud of the fact that we didn't use profanity. None of that two-and-a-half stuff, none of that debt exclusion, we dealt with it.
Yeah.
And I think we're starting to come to grips with the fact that, yeah, 43 years ago, I was first class out of there, out of Milford High, '74. That's why I know it was '74. But there's things that we have to do. But let me put it back on you. If we've got a space problem, why are we giving up Middle School East? I'm totally confused.
That's a really good question. We went through Middle School East, you know, there were multiple study groups and multiple examinations of that school, from the Cecil Group, who came in as an outside consultant, to those working in the district, to the building inspector, and our facilities manager. And the building has a lot of flaws. And it absolutely, I think one of my colleagues said it best at the last meeting, the building has served its purpose for a very long time in this town. But when you really go through, when you look at the site, and you look at the area around it, you look at the location, and you look at the, the need and the financial burden that it would take to make that building usable, not to mention the unexpected. When you go into a building of that age, and you start chipping away at things, most of us know what we're going to find, that A-word, and a few other things that no one likes to talk about. We could not find a case for that school at this point in time that made sense, given the needs of the district right now.
But what do you do at the high school, then? I mean, one of the things that I always thought would happen is, you throw out central office.
Yeah.
You throw out community use, in a nice way, but, and all of a sudden, you got space.
Yeah.
If, I mean, realistically, to do a new, a high school renovation, a new high school project, it's going to be seven, eight years. Maybe a little long, but in that seven-to-10-year frame, what do you do for the next seven years for space?
And that's a tricky one. It is. And you know, one of the things that I would like to see moving forward is more of a partnership between the school committee and our Selectmen, because neither group should be on an island. And we're both, both groups are financial, we're both committed to finances in the town, and we both have to work under the same, it's the same pot of money at the end of the day.
Yep.
It's Milford's money. And I think there are many different options that we could look at. So maybe there's another option for central office. We'd have to think about where that might be. Maybe it's renting some office space somewhere. Maybe it's some temporary offices that could be located adjacent to one of our schools or somewhere else in town. And this is why I would personally be excited about some kind of a feasibility study dealing with the MSBA, which, to your point, takes a long time. But let's start to think about what are the options? Is, maybe it's not building a new high school, maybe it's building an early childhood center, which would be a lot more cost-effective than building a $200 million high school.
Yeah, I don't see $200 million high school coming.
But that's what the new high schools are going for.
If you build new.
If you build new. So would it be a renovation of our high school with an annex for early childhood, because there's that nice connection between Shining Star and the high school? So I think there, now that we know that we're not moving forward with Middle School East, I think that opens up, it opens up every single possibility that we have. But we, we should look at all of them.
Yeah, I never thought Middle School East was a long-term fit. But I always figured, okay, it's there, even if we had to put in a little bit of money.
Yeah.
You know, say, okay, this is a seven, eight-year Band-Aid. We could do it. Because one way or another, the school committee's paying 62% of that building. You know, even though, I mean, everybody said they handed it over. No, they didn't, because we, we have to pay out of that $100 million pot.
Right.
We pay for that first, and then, when the school committee comes and says, this is how much money we need, well, we have that much left.
Right.
So...
Right.
But it's interesting. I just, I don't know what happens to the building.
Well, and I think that's where, you know, that our town, we're going to have to really look at that space and decide, what is it useful for? What could be of value in that space, if anything? There, there are many, many constraints. The lot itself, the...
You know, no parking, the age.
Yeah. When I walked through that building, and I, I understand that it wasn't kept up, because everyone knew, we were moving out, we were moving into this brand-new building, it wasn't a school that I felt I wanted to see a child, or a preschooler with special needs, or someone from central office working in. That was the condition I thought it was.
I agree with you. I had less sympathy towards central office.
They're still human beings.
I know, but they're adults. They could kind of weather the storm for a few years, till, you know, till we build a new wing on the high school and a new field house and brought the rest of it up. What do you see the biggest challenges coming for the school?
Biggest challenges, like between now and...
For the whole district, over the next two, three years?
Well, for sure, we have, not only do we already have a fairly significant ELL population, but when you look at the numbers of students in Arcata Two schools, who come from homes where English is not the first language, I think we're going to see an increase in the types of supports that we need to offer. And Milford's been very good about providing supports and working with families. But I think we're going to need to do even more in that area, when we're looking at almost 30% of our families in homes where English is not a first language, because as those kids get older...
Is it really that much now?
It's 28%. Yeah.
Wow.
It's, it's high.
You know, it's funny, because, again, I think back, when I grew up, I was one of those ELL kids.
Yeah.
It's when I stepped out of my house and said, "What are they speaking? Who are these funny people who don't speak normal?" Because normal to me was Portuguese. We never spoke English in the house.
Right.
You know, but back then, you got, okay, you're going to school, you're going to learn.
Right. And now, when kids are going to school, it's, you need to read this piece of text, this piece of text. You need to compare them both, you need to go back and forth, you need to find evidence, you need to write a response. You know, we're asking a lot of kids who are just trying to make sense of the language. So I'd say that's an obvious area. We talk about that one a lot. I think a second area that we really need to look at is consistency in our curriculum. And we've been talking about that in some of our meetings, ensuring that all classes at each grade have access to the same common standards, the same common teaching practices. And I think we still have a little ways to go with that, in terms of professional development. And so many things are changing in it, in the world of education. And if you blink, the Department of Education changes something, or they just give you, here, here are your math frameworks. Oh, guess what? We just revised them, now they look a little bit different. So I think it's, it's an ongoing act to make sure the teachers really are up to date in what's being expected in each content area, and that we have parity amongst our classrooms.
Well, you just took a monumental step with the Chromebook initiative at Woodland.
Yeah. Yeah. And so there's another. So when you talk about technology, the more technology that comes in, the more work we need to do, making sure people understand how they're using it, what's the most appropriate use in a classroom. We don't want to see Chromebooks taking the place of workbooks, and there is a fancy workbook with a keyboard now. So, and there's that whole professional development piece of, you know, we've had some great presentations at our school committee meetings of teachers who really are moving forward with technology. And so we need to see that kicking in. And I think as the Chromebooks expand to more grades, we'll see, we'll see that.
We've got that leap year, or whatever. I mean, right now, we've got Chromebooks, so you, all through Woodland.
Right.
The kids are using Chromebooks, they're using the new technology.
Right.
And then, you send them up to Nancy Angelini, and they get stone tablets. It's not that bad, but...
Right.
They certainly, at this point, aren't at the Chromebook stage.
Mm-hmm.
So now what happens?
Well, and that's it. And so Stacy has some. They have some carts, certainly not one-to-one, the way that we have it at Woodland. And what happens in that scenario is, you get the haves and the have-nots, and you have teachers who are frustrated, because they're learning how to use it, and they're, and these kids are coming up, and they're used to it, and they know, I can research this, or pull this paper off, and my teacher can grade it electronically, and all those great features. And what we're going to see is people fighting over them, and a lot of frustration. And the more frustration people have with technology, the less likely they are to use it. So I think the sooner we can get those tools into kids' hands...
So now, there's a proposal to fix that, right?
Yes, there is. We would like to see Chromebooks in the hands of each student, grade six through 12.
And I guess the question that's coming up is, I don't think anybody would argue that you've got to deal with grade six, like now.
Right.
Because otherwise, you got them coming out of Woodland, and then, they just drop.
Right.
So why does it make sense to do six through 12 all in one shot, versus doing six, seven, eight, and phasing it in?
I mean, for sure, you could do a phase in. I would not recommend phasing in one year at a time, because you're, you're not going to get the bang for your buck in terms of things that are really important, which is curriculum development, professional development for teachers, and momentum. Because one thing that happens in education, and maybe it happens in other fields too, is, once something catches on, it, it keeps rolling and rolling like a domino effect. And to sit and have one group of teachers learn how to do something, and to not impart that into the next group of teachers, by the time you get to grade 12, forget Chromebooks, because now, we're going to be on to the next technology. So it seems that if this is the direction, at least in my opinion, that we're going. And we have these valuable resources that are out there. And we have a technology savvy clientele of students. Why wouldn't we capitalize on that energy and their natural enthusiasm for technology? And get everyone learning and get everybody, moving kids in the right direction? That's not, that's a huge reason. It's also in terms of state testing. They're all expected to test on these things, which means the state expects kids to be able to toggle between two documents at one time and be able to make sense of things on the screen. And that's one thing we're struggling with, at least in my district with MCAS this year. Are kids ready to take that kind of test when they haven't had as much screen time as we would have liked? Because it's, it's foreign, if they don't have access to it, if they're not learning how to keyboard. Then they're being tested on something that they're not having access to on a daily basis.
Well, I remember, you know, many years ago, when the school committee brought up a leasing program for PCs in the media center. It was the same type of argument, and I went home and asked my daughter, I said, you know, is there a problem with the PCs in the media center? She said, why? I said, cause school committee says there is. She goes, there's no problem, we just won't use them. I said, excuse me? She goes, dad, I can't take documents from home. Bring them in, cause those PCs are so old. The minute I put a disc in, you can hear it, I think I can, I think I can. Half an hour later, I can get started. And that would, I mean, that turned my head, and I know a lot of people went home and asked. And what we found was, we're kidding ourselves to have six, seven-year-old PCs in the media center, cause the kids just weren't using them. And I'm getting a feeling the Chromebook era is kind of replacing that same idea.
I think that's the model that most schools are going to right now. They're mobile, they're, they're relatively inexpensive. And they get the kids what they need, which is access to the internet, the ability to research. Clearly, there's a lot out in the media right now about teaching kids to research properly and make sure they're using appropriate sites and appropriate facts. To your point about being able to take things home, my daughter can write a paper on her phone. She can access her Google, and I'm like, how could you possibly write a paper on your phone? That's ridiculous, but she can. And it, efficient or not, it's, she's in her account and she knows what she's doing.
Well, see, that's the other thing, I mean, these kids are, I mean, our parents said it about us. These children are so technology savvy. I mean, my daughters think I'm a dinosaur. And compared to them on that little, you know, I mean, I don't know how they can sit there.
But they do.
But they do, and they're so much more efficient at it than I am.
No, that, that's the world, that's the world that they, they have grown up in and they understand it. And it provides incredible access to their teachers. They can submit papers on a Saturday and receive feedback from their teachers over the weekends. It's very different than, you know, the teacher goes home and the red marks and the papers and it's So I guess one of the differences between then and now is, teaching and learning was more static. And now it can be much more dynamic and in real time. So that, that's a value.
What new programs do you see coming into our school system?
Well, I think we've heard some conversation about adding to the vocational programs. Not to compete with BBT.
Hallelujah.
But we may have some spots. Like there was the radio broadcasting, I think is one of the next ones that they're looking at.
Jen, I always think of my father. If you put him in organic chemistry, he would not do well. You know, as an academician, academician, he was just not his forte. Give him a tool, he was an artist. There was nothing carpenter, electric, you name it, if he got his hands on tools, he was an absolute artist. And I worry because when we grew up, back in the old days, if you were going to college, you went to Milford High. If you weren't going to college, you went to BBT to learn to be a carpenter. But I worry, cause somebody like my dad coming in, he'll never be in the top 10% of the academic class, or 20%. So he's not getting into BBT. So now you sit there and say, wait a minute, what happens to these kids? They're not all gonna be excellent in organic chemistry. But they're smart, hard-working kids. Who can't get into VOTAC. What do we do with them?
Right. And so I think programming like that, to tap into the interest level and, and to find areas where things are meaningful outside of school. Because it is true that not all of our kids are going to go to college. And some of our kids may have to put themselves through college. And so they may need to be developing a trade or a workfield while they're in school part-time. And that's okay. So I think the more that we can look at, what are some holes? What are some things that are of interest and of value in the workplace? Those are the things that we need to be looking at. I would say leadership isn't an area that I see, like Pete, our athletic director, is doing a great job with working with Carrie Benak.
The Leadership Academy, yay! Well, no, he came on. And he won my support when he looked at me and said, I have student athletes. Not athletes who are doing something in school. He seemed to have his head on straight to say, they're students. They're nice that they're athletes. And some of them need the athletic support to get the scholarships to go. But they're students. So my hat has always been tipped.
Well, and I've heard that repeatedly. The number of things that they're trying to grow to teach our kids how to be leaders and how to advocate for themselves and how to be role models. That's, those are things you can't teach in a classroom necessarily. Yes, you can, but there are other ways of teaching it too. And that's any kind of program that helps kids develop leadership. Those are things that people do look for in the workforce. No matter where you go to college, you've gotta be able to stand on your own two feet and gather people and move people if you wanna be successful. So those are two areas. The third is something I've already touched on, which is making sure we have the right social, emotional supports for kids. And there are many curriculums out there and many experts in the field. And I know there's some grant money that was just brought into the district. So that's an area that we've really gotta look at.
Is Milford, and let's face it, everybody looks at Milford High. Is Milford High safe for my daughters and sons?
What I can tell you is I have an eighth-grade daughter. And what I've heard from and about our high school, sitting on that side of the table for the past three years, I can't wait for my daughter to get to Milford High School. I think it's a vibrant, exciting place. I do not have any concerns about the safety at Milford High School. We've had issues that have arisen regarding safety that I think have been addressed very quickly, very swiftly, appropriately. I don't think Milford High School is any less safe than any other school in this area. Given the fact that you can go to the grocery store and the grocery store isn't safe. But I think we have very responsive administration up there. I think they're working very hard to be proactive about expectations. And we can never predict what kids are gonna do. We can set the stage and
Years ago, you heard that two girls got into a fight, oh my god, the world's ending. Yeah, I looked at my wife, I said, you know, if it was my children, I'd probably have a different view. But the fact that the biggest security issue we've had this year is a couple of kids got into a fight. And I'm not condoning violence. But it didn't seem all that terrible compared to some of the other schools.
I agree with you, things happen everywhere. They can, because kids are unpredictable. But I think we have the structures in place and the supports in this high school and the attention where issues are handled. So that's, that's one of the lesser things on my list of, of things I would be worried about.
But you're sending your child to Milford High.
I am. Assuming she gets out of the eighth grade, that's where she's going.
I was gonna say, I can't imagine a stronger vote of confidence. You know, cause it was always funny, because people ask me, cause you know, we were recruiting into the area. And they'd look and say, how are the Milford schools? And it was funny, cause I said, you know, it depends what you're willing to put in. I don't care where you go. You want the best for your kids? Jose Villar, old assistant principal, head of Brookside. I mean, his family and my family have known each other since the old country. When we were looking at where do we place Emily, he looked at me and said, I'll guarantee you, she will get no better education anywhere as long as you take an active role. And he was right. He was absolute, I could not ask for a better environment that my daughters grew up in, than the Milford school system. I've been totally pleased.
And that's a firsthand account of a dad who has two successful daughters right now.
They got into the schools they wanted. I mean, Emily only got into one school, but she only applied to one school. I always laugh and say, your sister got into a bunch of schools. But you know, all kidding aside, not only did they get in, they did well at the school. And then they came out and were able to do what they wanted.
I've yet to sit in a meeting or hear people from the high school present about the high school and they haven't been presenting something that's new, something that's moving kids forward. They're, they're always thinking about what's the next thing that we can do up here to meet the needs of all kids and to help kids. That's what we wanna see.
Then how do we deal with the fact that school choice is always not a pleasant topic?
Yep. You know, I have a lot of feelings on school choice, and I know as a school committee, we've batted this around and and I know from the FinCom's perspective, we've been asked to really make an effort to keep our kids in Milford. And I think we're doing a good job. We have, there is more on social media from the Milford Public Schools. That would put us up against any other school district in the way that, you know, the, the district is trying to communicate. We're trying to get our message out, branding, if you will. There are parents, no matter what we, we could stand on our heads, every one of us. And there would be parents who would still say, I'm sending my kid to this town because I like a small place. And I'm sending them here because I like a homogeneous type of school. There are, people make their decisions for lots of different reasons. And I think the best thing that we can do are the things that we talked about. So something that we didn't talk about yet is, we're working on a long-range plan. And I think
That was coming up, because for many, many years, that's what drove the investment decisions. When we did Brookside, you know, all the pieces, all the way up to Woodland. Was that we had a long-range ed plan. And for a decade, we followed it. So now, obviously, the question is, where's the plan?
Right. The plan is in the creation stages. So we've, we've got a long-range planning committee that Kevin McIntyre and Craig Consigli are spearheading. We've got a lot of community members, teachers, school committee members, so. But we're at the beginning stages of putting that together and identifying what are the main drivers right now? What are the main issues? And what do we need to be looking at over the next 10, 15 years? So there are a lot of things we have to talk about and get down on that so we can start working towards what's going to cost money? What's, what's not going to cost money? Probably none of it. Everything comes with some kind of a cost, right?
Yes. But you know, the school choice issue, some of it truly is financial. Cause there's a lot of money leaving Milford. But then you've got old people like me, who also have the emotional issue of, why? And again, it's like unemployment, you're never gonna have it at zero. There's always gonna be, like you say, the parents who say, I'm sending my children to Hope Dale, cause there's 80 kids in the whole class. Right, wrong, or indifferent, it's their children, you gotta support their decision. But it just, emotionally, it hurts to see so many more children leaving the center of the universe than coming in.
Yeah, and I think the district, you know, they have done some outreach to families to try to understand some of the reasons. And for as many families as there are, there are different reasons. But I guess my, my take on it is, the biggest thing we can do right now to support our schools is to make sure we have top-notch instruction. And that we keep our eye on the prize. And that we make sure that kids have the tools to learn. So technology's a big one. Making sure our curriculum meets the expectations that the state and the Common Core have put before us.
And that the colleges put before us.
Yes. Making sure our kids are getting into schools, which we've talked about already tonight, and they are. Getting the word out and publicizing the great things that are happening. And answering questions when people have them, or responding to, to problems. And that's, you know, kinda one of the exciting things about being on the school committee. I don't get to deal with the daily ins and outs, but when people come and they have a challenge.
They have to do that in your day job.
Yeah, right? But I think if we can address people's concerns honestly and try to make change where in the areas where we know we need to make change, I think those are the things that we need to be doing. And we need to make sure that we're not expending so much money, I mean, so much time on kids who are leaving. We need to expend our time and energy on making sure what we have here is rich and robust and works for all of our kids. And you'd hope the rest would come and that But I, I understand, I mean, when you say, like, nobody wants to feel like you live in the town where people wanna leave your schools.
Yes.
We work too hard in our schools.
And again, from, I got my financial hat on, I say, I don't wanna lose the money. But Milford's never put money behind their kids. You know, the kids have always been, or ahead of, I shouldn't say behind. It's always been the kids ahead of the money. And we always seem to find the money to do the right thing by our kids. Organizationally, are we organized correctly as a district?
You mean our grade configuration or?
Just in general, when you look at the way organizations work. You know, I mean, it seems like ed reform put a lot more power in the principal's hands. Cause it was supposed to make it more efficient, easier to manage. Has it worked?
I think, you know, you hate to go back to money, but I think organizationally, there, there are things I would like to see coming into the Milford Public Schools. But they, each thing that I can think of comes with a price tag. So I'll tell you one thing that I, I love to see, and I've talked about it with our superintendent, is we really need some curriculum directors in our district. Some people whose full-time day job is to focus on
We had those.
Well, we did, and I don't think we have them anymore.
No, I, I was gonna say, four, five years ago? We had curriculum directors.
And that must've gotten absorbed into
I think what ended up happening is, the years where the budgets got tight. They got given a bag in a class and said, go teach.
And that happens, and that's happened in a lot of other places too. But I think with the complexity of things we're asking of kids now, we have curriculum team leaders, but they're, they have a full-time day job, which is teaching kids. And to think that they're really gonna oversee some of the things that we need, it's a fallacy.
What would a curriculum director do that's different from a team leader?
What they would do is they would have the ability to meet with grade levels. So they, if there are 15 teachers at a grade level, they could meet with them, maybe not all at once, but in parts. They can look at student work, they could coach teachers. They could observe lessons and give feedback. They could teach lessons and be observed. So really what they would, they, they would make sure we have consistency. So they would go in every sixth grade English class and see, what are the big ideas? What are the big things we're all supposed to be teaching in sixth grade English? And let's make sure we're all on the same page. A principal can't do all that. It's just when you're dealing with all the other things and the two kids having the fight, and that takes a whole day. You know, there, there's a certain amount you can do as an instructional leader in a building, but you can't make the same impact that could provide parent education nights. But it may be not in every curriculum area, but in a couple of the key areas, that's something I think we're missing organizationally. As for the rest, I think we're, we're kinda where a lot of other districts are. We, central office is very bare bones, because the money is being put where it should be, which is in front of kids. So that makes sense. I think when I look at an organization, I look at it as the kind of organization where people can feel free to speak their mind. And where all ideas are considered. And I'd say, right now, I feel like the Milford Public Schools is that kind of an organization. People are collaborative and congenial, and you need that.
I've never seen Milford teachers scared to stand up for what they believe. Somehow, that passion that they show for the children seems to come out when you ask them, you know, what their opinion is. I've not seen too many of them shy away.
Right, no, that's, yeah.
Now, what can we do? You know, you talk about ELL being 30%. You know, and I happen to come from a house where my parents had no idea. You know, they got a notice that they're supposed to show up. My father put on his suit, put on his little hat, and showed up at the school. No clue, but somebody told him, if you wanna support your son, be there. He went there. What can we do to get those parents more involved? Or are we already trying to get them more involved in the educational process?
Yeah, I mean, we, we are very fortunate in Milford, we have a great ELL coordinator. Jen, or Janie, and I think it's her new name. And we have, we have a pretty significant number of staff members who are there to support our students. Are we doing everything that we can for all families right now? I don't, you know what, Al, I don't even know the answer to that. So do we have translators who are at our meetings? Do we have
When you ask me, are you doing everything that you possibly could for everybody? I'll tell you, no. You know, it's like world peace.
Right, right. But are we doing enough in terms of outreach to, are we having parent coffees? But are we doing enough in terms of outreach to... Are we having parent coffees? Are we inviting our families in and finding out what are the challenges that they're experiencing? I don't know the answer to that. I'm a little embarrassed to say that I don't. I haven't thought to ask that question yet. But I think it's a good question. Because what we do want is for families to feel like they have a voice. And about, you know, to the point about your father, we want them coming into the schools, and we want them involved. And so what are the things we need to do to see if they... Are they aware of what's going on? I know we have challenges with not all families are literate in their own home language. So it's not just as easy as sending home a translated document. So, you know, I think that would be an interesting topic to raise with Jen from my perspective as a school committee member.
Yeah, because I brought up an idea. I'd love to see more programs explained in different languages. Because you do have people who aren't very literate. But they can watch TV.
Right.
You know, so if they were told... If somebody had told my father that he should watch TV at 8 o'clock to learn, and it would be in Portuguese, I have no doubt you couldn't drag him away because he'd want to do that.
Yep.
You know, luckily, he could read, but there's a lot of people... You know, my dad came from northern Portugal where you got your four years of education, then you got put out in the fields to work. So you were limited in not much organic chemistry there in four years of school.
Right.
But if we could do more of that, just to get those parents more involved, I think that'd be great.
Well, and I agree with you. And school is scary for all parents. So then when you take someone for whom the language is a challenge, it's even scarier. And it shouldn't be. Because you kind of already pointed this out earlier, but research says the number-one predictor of students performing in school is parent involvement.
Sure.
I mean, that's a fact.
As we start looking at the big areas, I mean, security-wise, we feel comfortable. Educationally, I mean, we can always be better. Is Milford perfect? No. But our kids are getting into the schools. They're doing well. Where do we take the school system now? I mean, besides adding in lots of new teachers, which would be nice.
Right.
But, you know, things like aides. Couple of years ago, we heard that we're a training group, that we train educational aides, and then they run off and make 30% more somewhere else. Is that still an issue or...
Well, I think we did address that, and there was... There was an increase in the pay rate for our aides.
Oh, there was.
Because I think we found that there was some... There wasn't parity in what their colleagues were making around in the neighboring districts. You know, you can't run a school system without aides. It just is a fact. And I'm not talking about the kind of aide who is what we kind of used to have in the olden days, which is a helper teacher who'd come in and put some bulletin boards and help with correcting a copy. And that kind of aide doesn't exist anymore. I'm talking about kids who really need support getting through their day. We need those aides in certain cases.
Those are people doing with the IEPs and...
Yes. Yes. But there also has been some conversation about how do you best spend your money in a district? And do we have so many aides that we kind of have lost the purpose of what they're all there for versus some of the value the classroom teacher could bring? And so, you know, I think that's a question that we have to examine here and in all districts. Because we tend to say, oh, this child's having a problem. Let's give them an aide. And giving a child an aide isn't an answer. It's a Band-Aid. And so we have to figure out, you know, I'm not sure about the training round. I think some... I think a lot of aides like to work in the school district where they live. And in some cases, it's not necessarily about a dollar more here or a dollar more there.
No, but you have to be within a reasonable amount.
Right. Right.
You know, when the word was out that we're paying 30, 40% less, that didn't seem reasonable.
Well, they're hard jobs also. So sure, if you can make 40% more and have a 10-minute commute, then... You know, you hate to say it that way, but that is some of what we were dealing with.
Well, I mean, I've gone on the record saying I'd love to see every teacher making $100,000. As long as you would use the words "at will." You know? In my company and all the companies I've been at, if you don't perform, you get replaced. You know, I'd love to see it be a full-time, 12-month job where people can make a real living. Because I see it. I mean, when you see teachers working in grocery stores and...
Right. Right.
That tells you that you're not quite at where you want to be.
Right. It takes a long time to get there.
But, you know, again, you know, the whole idea that if you're not performing, there's got to be a way of replacing them.
That's true. And the way that we evaluate teachers in Massachusetts has changed. And there is a lot more in terms of what teachers are held accountable for. And it's laid out in a much more clear way than it ever has been before. So teachers can very easily see if they're meeting the mark, and it's very clear to make a case if someone isn't.
Now, what happens...
That is my role in school committee, by the way. I only evaluate one person, that's Kevin.
But what happens if somebody isn't performing? Can you actually replace them? Because that's always been, well, you can't do anything. You can never get rid of somebody.
No, I mean, we have an incredible rubric that was put out by the Department of Education full of dozens and dozens of indicators in four major areas. Curriculum instruction, meeting the needs of all students, family and community engagement, and professional growth or professional work. And there are many areas under each one of those four major headings that all of us, administrators, teachers, we all have to demonstrate evidence of our work and our growth and our proficiency in each of those areas. And evaluation is a big... It's a big bear right now from the perspective of the school administrator because you have a lot that you have to be able to demonstrate that a staff member is meeting proficiency. Because all students should have a teacher who's proficient. They are all entitled to that.
But that's normal when you look at managers in any company. The reason you're paid as a manager is you're expected to manage. So the fact that you've got to evaluate your staff?
Yes.
I sort of look and say, well, then don't be a principal or a superintendent if you're not willing to do it.
I think the point in what they have now is it's much more evidence-driven. So from the perspective of a principal or a superintendent, it's a lot easier now to say, absolutely, this person... In most cases, most of our teachers are proficient. And proficient is the... It really is the gold standard. There's exemplary, but proficient is the kind of teacher you want in front of your kids. Most of our teachers are proficient. Maybe they're not in this indicator or that indicator, but they're, you know, they're... We're all constantly growing, or you hope anyway. But for the few cases where they're not, we have a lot more teeth as school administrators now in terms of making a case and taking steps.
You know, it's interesting because my daughter put it into perspective for me. When she said, Dad, my job is to get all of my kids to the level, the best level they can. And as a special needs teacher, she said, not every child is going to perform at the same level.
Right.
But I've got, if I do my job right, they're all at the most they can be. And I sat there and I said, you know, that's pretty profound because that has nothing to do with special needs. That should be every educator's goal of every child.
Right. Right.
You know, and if you really think that way... I mean, normally, I end up by asking you, why should I vote for you? But at this point, I don't know that it really is relevant. I mean, you're going to vote for yourself, so you win. But there's many of us that are very proud of everything the school committee does.
Well, thank you.
You know, on balance, is it always something we agree with? Probably not. There's always going to be a little bit, but, you know, the dealings I've had, we've approached it. And, you know, we go through everything at the FinCom. We bang our chests, we're broke, we're dying. The school committee comes in and says, if we don't get our raises, we're in trouble, you know? And then at the end, it always seems like, okay, what's reasonable?
Right.
And I think that's the key, is we work together. And we keep the kids as in front of our minds and hearts as we can.
And I agree with that. And even being an unopposed candidate for this position right now, I have incredible pride serving this community. And I love being part of our school committee. And I love being able to think that I'm a small part, at least, of some of the difference that we're making.
Well, we want to thank you.
So thank you.
And as always, get to know the school committee. Get to know your principals. If you have questions, pick up the phone and call them. I've not found one that if I called and asked a question, they said, I'm sorry, I'm not talking to you. Milford's got a great school system. It gets better for your child if you're involved. So do our six loyal viewers. Good night, may God bless, and thanks for joining me.